We're alive, your worship.
Great, thank you. All right, council, I'd like to call this committee, the whole meeting for January eleventh, twenty twenty four, to order with adoption of the agenda, and I'd like to have the agenda amended or be adopted as amended to include an item nine C, City of Revelstoke Visual Representation/ proposal to update city's logo. Does someone want to make that motion for me, please? Councilor Devlin, Council Chair, all in favor? Motion's carried, thank you. Adoption of the minutes of the committee, the whole meeting from November sixteenth, twenty twenty three. Someone want to make that motion, Councilor Devlin? Councilor Stiftenhurst, all in favor? Motion's carried. Any business arising from those minutes? Saying none, I'm going to move on to delegations and presentations. We have the Go By Bike Revelstoke group here today. Mr. Lay, I believe you and Mr. Robson are going to come forward or one or the other to do your presentation. You're welcome to come up to the podium, please.
Mayor Schultz, members of council, thank you for inviting us to talk to you today. We're Revelstoke Go By Bike. We try to represent eight one town who use their bicycles for transportation. I'm Richard Lay. I am last minute stand in for Mike Neal, who unfortunately isn't feeling well, so he sends his regrets, especially since he did much of the work that we're going to present to you. And Tom Robson and Suzanne Greaves are also here from Go By Bike. We've had the pleasure of being involved in many of the bike transportation activities in town in the past. Mass Transportation Plan, Bike to School, Bike Parking, Grisley Plaza, so. Our interest is to help make this a successful project and to see that cyclists actually use it. So there are a lot of us, a lot of cyclists in Revelstoke, maybe more per capita than any other in B C, maybe even Canada. And who are concerned mostly about are the up to sixty percent of cyclists who are interested in this kind of project, but who are hesitant. They are uneasy riding, sharing a road with busy traffic. So that's our target. Audience is the interested but cautious demographic. So we got interested in this particularly after Engineer Black's presentation in October to your committee about status of the Fourth Street project, and he finished by asking for feedback. So out went Tom and Mike to spend several days on Fourth Street, looking at what could make this a successful project and what might stir up a hornet's nest and make it difficult to get public acceptance. So they counted every single parking spot along Fourth Street. Several times a day, they went out and looked at how many cars were actually parked there. Counted a number of houses, driveways, road crossings, shuttle bus stops, and put together a really fascinating table, which is in your correspondence. If you have trouble going to sleep tonight, I dig into that table. And so that helped us to come to some conclusions about, okay, if you are going to put a bike lane on Fourth Street, which is the worst side, which is the better side? You know, two-way traffic versus one-way traffic, who gets impacted and how can that be addressed? And we came up with three sort of options, which I'll briefly try to present here. The first, which is sort of the base case, such as straight along Fourth Street, starting from the roundabout at Townley right through to the bridge at Ellis Sillawatt. And so there are about seven blocks, seven major city blocks along there. And if there were to be a separated bike way along there, that's the route that has the highest infrastructure. So the elephant in the room is always like, how much is this going to cost and how quickly can we build something? So we're really on to the rapid implementation that Engineer Black was pressing us to be concerned on in October. So this route would have the highest infrastructure cost for protected barriers. Impose the greatest inconvenience to residents, people parking in front of their house or in front of businesses. And and then a big issue is, okay, if we go along here somewhere pedestrians and cyclists have to get across Fourth Street at the roundabout, and drivers in the roundabout have gone enough to look at the traffic entering and leaving the roundabout in signage without additional distraction of people crossing then right in front of them. And if there is somebody crossing, like a bike coming across to get to that bikeway over there, say, then the traffic in the circle stops, and when the traffic in the circle stops, then the entering roads stop and pretty soon we have a gridlock situation. So not good, and we didn't think it was a well, there are alternatives which are better. And what you discussed briefly back in October was how about doglegging over to Fifth Street. So there are a couple of options we see that would use a bypass along Fifth Street that starts at your existing signal crossing at the end of Fifth Street across Victoria. And then picks up a quiet residential road for two blocks from Victoria over to Downey. And then there's about seventy meters of Downey Street between Fifth Street to get up to Fourth Street. And the interest on this option is, hey, you've already got the infrastructure here built, and presumably maybe that's what the intent was when it was built. Less infrastructure, we've knocked off two blocks that we've got to do anything on on Fourth Street, and that means reducing the number of parking spaces that are lost and people's houses that you've got bikes running in front of and possible inconvenience. And it gives us this nice direct access to the rail trail corridor that was flagged in the the Master Transportation Plan as a future project to get from bikeways down to the Greenbelt. So that's that's right here. Now, even if we do tie into Fourth Street at Downey Street, Edward is still an important intersection for pedestrians and cyclists crossing. So here we are standing in the crossing at Townley roundabout, looking down Fourth Street towards the hill. And boy, you look at a photo like this and you see Fourth Street and say, what's the problem? Like, why, why do we need all this infrastructure? It sounds, it looks like a great place to bike and people bike it now. But this doesn't show it jammed with folks going to the hill or coming back from the hill or rush hour at the grocery store or emergency vehicles trying to stick handle their way through the crowds to get from one end of town to the other. Whereas this is what Fifth Street looks like much of the time. Looks like a pretty nice place to think about running bikes on and could be a two-way shared lane bikeway with minimal infrastructure cost. And here you've got this lovely multi-user path infrastructure already ready to go. This is standing in the middle of Victoria, looking down Fifth Street towards the hill. So the other option using Fifth Street is to continue on on Kalia Lane, which carries on right at the end of Fifth Street at Downey. And that allows us to bypass another block of Fourth Street, which is the block where there is going to be future housing and the potential demands for parking and access there. So we could miss all of that if we can use Kalia. And the the main infrastructure issues there are when you're coming back on Kalia into town, there are sightlines here that are obstructed that you'd have to pay attention to somehow. And this is a very busy intersection here, like traffic coming off of Fourth Street, turning down Edward may run into cyclists or pedestrians who are coming across and trying to get over onto this side of the road. So something would have to be done at that particular intersection. So here we are at the intersection of Edward and Fourth Street, looking, should say Edward. Oh, yeah, Downey Street's Edward is bypassed by Kalia. So here we are in front of South Side Grocery, looking towards the hill, and these are the spaces that get used with a lot of on-street parking during shopping hours. And here's this lovely quiet back lane that is just calling out for more cycling. So our main conclusion was that we support bidirectional protected bikeway on Fourth Street on this northeast side, so the left-hand side. So in our analysis and report, we call this the northeast side and this the southwest side. So we like the plan for protected two-way bikeway along this northeast side between Edward and the bridge. And then with either option B or C connecting to it from Victoria along Fifth Street. So we got lots of good hard numbers in our report, but what's still we believe is critical to the success of the project is some plan for communicating with the people of town, the folks that live along there, have businesses along there to share with them why this is an important project and why really we don't have any alternatives. It has to somehow get from that side of town to this side of town, and somehow we've got to get through that Fourth Street corridor. For now, Ellis Sillawatt Bridge is the only way across the river, and then we've got this gap between the the nice new trails along Airport Way, multi-user path up at Nickel and here. So we're trying to trying to fill that gap. We think this approach is a big improvement in safety. It looks like it's affordable and best best option we we considered, and it should appeal to the thirty-seven to sixty percent of the population that we probably interested but concerned. That for sure, they're the strong and fearless warriors out there who ride the road under any conditions. And so go for it. That's our presentation.
Thank you, Richard. Appreciate it. Council, any questions, Mr. Lay or Councilor Devlin?
Um, I mean, I don't know if you have a go-by-bike answer for this or just a personal one, but between the two options, B or C, which one would you think is the slightly more desirable outcome in your, your organ? You can answer either personally or for the organization, whoever you like.
I think we are leaning towards Kalia Lane, like get off Fourth Street as much as possible. And that intersection Edward is so important anyway, we might as well invest our attention into that, I guess, bang for your buck there.
Buck with addressing the concerns of sightlines, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I should, Councilor.
Thank you for the chair. I was just going to mention, you know, again, the sightlines for Edward going onto Fourth Street are absolutely horrendous. There's a brick wall that kind of includes any traffic that's traveling southbound from seeing any pedestrians hitting that crosswalk. So that is a concern that I have. And then the other concern that I have is not necessarily knowing what's the plan for four-twenty Downey Street. I'm not a hundred percent sure I could support Kalia Lane without knowing what those things are. So just to do commerce, thank you.
Councilor Chair.
Thanks, Worship. I just have a question for Ms. Floyd. As this is a delegation, is the project timed to ask questions to staff or make recommendations, or should that be saved?
There's a recommendation on a little further along your agenda. Sorry, I'm not Miss Floyd, but
Councilor Chair, through your worship. The report does appear later on in the agenda. It depends on what type of questions you're going to ask.
Probably pick on staff.
I'm sure that, Mr. Black, are you willing to respond to inquiries now, or would you prefer to wait?
At council's pleasure.
Just procedurally, that's that's why I'm curious. If you want them now, I'm ready. Thanks, through your worship, to Director Black. A quick question about Kalia Lane. How wide is the right away there?
Unfortunately, I'm not able to answer that question definitively.
Hasn't it?
Five meters.
Okay.
It's it's small. And if if we need, and unfortunately, our previous bylaws all directed cars to be parking in the alleys, so all of the parking garages face the alleys right now. That's not to preclude this as an option. Obviously, anything that we can do to utilize the information presented today, we will take that back to our engineering design team to incorporate what we can here. We've got constraints, as you're aware, with the bridge. We only have a very narrow side, very narrow sidewalk on the east side of the bridge, which so we've got to try and think about that picture. I need a new bridge. I mean, we need a new bridge to cross the Fourth Street, which hopefully will have two, three-meter-wide lanes on either side of the traffic future. But what we've got to do is figure out the best way, the best bang for our buck right now, and this is exactly the kind of information that we can take back to the design team incorporate what we can with best practices from the traffic engineering and from traffic calming perspective. And call it good.
Good. Ms. Floyd.
Thank you. I just received a message from Mr. Simon, six meter.
Six meters, good. So third of what we, about a third of what we need?
So typical multi-use path is three meters wide. So that would accommodate a narrow track for two cyclists going either direction. You couldn't stack multiple people riding together, going bidirectional. And so are we doing a bidirectional or a unidirectional path? We haven't gotten there yet, but we've got some concepts that we have previously put together, and we've got this presentation. And I just have gotten my, the last of my design team put together in December to start coming up with concepts, which we brought back to council for consideration and and for input from the community.
Awesome. Well, thank you for answering that question, even though procedurally is probably the wrong time. Thanks, Richard, for bringing this forward and presenting on the fly as you did. This is great feedback, and it's great to have boots on the ground outside of six step.
Excellent. Councilor Palmer.
Your worship, yeah, and thank you, Mr. Lay, for making the presentation and your involvement. To just a bit of history, one of the ideas of having that pathway on Fifth near the roundabout was eventually to, you know, steer more of human power traffic through there. I do live right in that neighborhood, and it is very busy in the morning, especially with the kids going to school. They kind of take multiple routes through that, through there on bikes in addition to walking. And I just wanted to say, I guess, for myself, what would keep me up at night on a project like this is sort of the the focus on the devil is in the details and that little things, you know, change you know, a great community initiative into something that's problematic and has some challenges. So I think having, you know, multiple eyes looking towards this, having a collaborative process is going to steer us in the right direction. Like, for example, you observed through your studies, the sightlines around Kalia Lane as it comes out there, and that's something just from walking my dog in that neighborhood that I know that, you know, if I was on my bike, I would be, you know, come into a full slowdown before I popped out of that alleyway if I was heading towards downtown, because you can get wiped out by cars going in other directions. So it's just great to see that level of of detail and and then also the focus on coming up with something good and and making it work in the context of the neighborhood, such as noting that there's a lot of density right near Townley where and not driveways on the properties, but further out where it was developed later on. There's a lot more off-street parking, as was the the trend at the the time when that was developed. So, yeah, thank you very much for the presentation.
Councilor Palmer.
Thank you, Mayor Souls. Yeah, I'd just like to really thank the Go By Bike people for their continued interest and diligence. We have a, they have a number of people, professionals that are very, very dedicated, and you can see that in this report. It's, and it's, it's an amazing report worth thousands of dollars that's given, just been given to to the city, and I really super appreciate that. And, you know, one of the, one of, because of the Go By Bikes people's interest in in this kind of diligence, not just a cursory sort of comments that quite often will have from the public, but diligence and looking at details is really, really super important, because quite often, one of the failures of engineering reports is it's an out-of-town engineering company. They come and do a quick, or, you know, whatever investment in time, but very limited from the scope of work. Don't have a vested interest in the community and tend to just rely on traditional engineering standards that are sometimes not in keeping with the values of the community. And so I I'm really excited about what the Go By Bike people are doing, and just thank you very, very much, and I look forward to seeing how this proceeds going ahead. Thank you.
Great. Any other comments from council? Mr. Orlando.
Can I be a troublemaker? I wonder if you could back up a few slides on to the picture of the Fifth Street crossing there. I'm sorry if that's going to be a big pain. I just wanted to point something out related to that intersection. I do watch it, see people going through there every day, just because I see there. And often there's a bit of conflict. And one thing I notice is that the yellow pedestrian signal indicator, that is not very accessible, and it's blocked by that sign in the middle there. And I feel that that little detail there, so you can't get your bike close to it. You'd have to literally put your bike down, get off and go press it. It's quite hard right there. I think is something that should be addressed. I think that sign could go elsewhere. Or and that would sort of help with the flow there and make that a little safer intersection. Anyways, I wanted to put that over.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Mike, I see you online. Any any brief comments from you? Thank you for what you've done and working with Tom, Richard, and Suzanne to come up with this. You're muted. Mike, you're muted.
Looking for it. Yeah.
There you go.
Been a long time since I've done remote presentations. It used to be my job. But thank you, Richard, for giving that presentation in my absence. I'm starting to feel better, but I certainly don't want to share my illnesses with you. Thank you very much for listening to our input. And really, the message here is that we want to continue to help. We we have the time and the passion for active transportation in Revelstoke. And and it is our interest, and that's what we want to contribute to the community. We have lots of other ideas, but this was a big one, and particularly my concern, I just didn't catch the first few minutes, but that crossing at Fourth Street where the northeast bike lane would have to cross Fourth Street to get to the southwest side, which is where literally all of the destinations are, a hundred percent. That crossing is right immediately at the roundabout. And and I don't criticize the roundabout design because they had no space. So it had to go there. And I've tried it myself. I've gone to see how it works. And when you come there, it's a, it's an unsafe place to cross. It had to be done there. There was no other place. But cars driving through there are very distracted. They've got, you know, they're trying to figure out where do I come in? Where do I go? Where are cars coming from? It's a small roundabout. I wouldn't recommend anybody crossing there on a bike or walking. I've gone and done it, and what happens is when you press the button to activate the lights there and you start to walk across. Well, by the time you get to the middle of the intersection, the roundabout is gridlocked because not a single car can exit. The cars have to stop in the grid, in the roundabout, and that's where all the cars are exiting. I would say eighty percent of vehicles are want to exit to head south on Fourth. So you press the button to activate the lights, and within about five seconds, you've got the grid, the the roundabout gridlocked. People can't come in and exit on any other part of the the roundabout. So it's not a problem today because it's very little used for crossing. Maybe a little bit during school, let out. But if we're to put a northeast bike lane there, look out. It would be a big problem. So that's the only thing I want to add to that, other than my sincere thanks, and I really hope to spend more time helping the city in the future on active transportation, because that's what we're passionate about. And we need to attract that thirty-seven to sixty percent of riders who are not riding today. But they will not ride on an arterial route. They will, they will ride on safe residential streets or protected bikeways. So thank you. That's what we look forward to doing in Revelstoke.
Thanks, Mike. Councilor Chair.
Thanks, Worship. Just clarification, Mr. Floyd, which what section are you talking about where that issue is happening?
That would be at the the south exit of the roundabout, heading south on Fourth Street.
Fourth and what? So if there, sorry.
It would be roundabout and Fourth Street. Exiting the roundabout to go south on Fourth Street.
Is there a light there?
No, there is no.
Okay. That's why I was getting confused. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. All right. Thank you all. Appreciate it. We are going to move on. So moving on to item H A, meeting dates discussion. So, Councilor Palmer, you had wanted us to come back to committee of the whole to discuss some of the meeting dates. Any input you want to give at this point?
Thank you, Mayor Souls. Yeah, it's mostly that there's been discussion. There's been some frustration on the timing of meetings and the fairly frequent cancellation or changing of meetings and additional meetings. And so I I just thought, and I've heard that from other councilors, and just thought we should have an opportunity to discuss this. We didn't before adopting the schedule, which we had to legislatively, we had to do that. So a a couple of observations from my perspective is, for example, today with today's committee of the whole, two days after the regular council meeting, it's, you know, it's right, right on the heels of it, and I think most of our effort as individual counselors, certainly mine anyway, is really focused on the the regular meeting, and so there's less preparation time available for the committee of the whole. And so one of the things I'm I'm wondering if it would be better if that was on an alternate week. One of the other suggestions that I have is that there's sometimes confusion as especially special meetings. So we have our regular council meetings at two o'clock. Committee, sorry, three o'clock, and the committee of whole is at two o'clock, a different time on a different day. If 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 the committee of the whole was on on the alternate week at on Tuesdays also at three o'clock, it'd be easier, I think it would be easier for some of us anyway, for scheduling, knowing that Tuesdays at three o'clock is kind of the designated time. And also for special meetings, there's often you know, I think difficulty for staff to try and herd us, councillor cats, together on finding an appropriate time. And so if special meetings were on those alternate Tuesdays. The the other comment that I had is I know the C E O had when he first, well, a couple, a year and a half or so ago, was proposing some changes on the committee of the whole, and we haven't really had that discussion on the philosophy of committee of the whole and that kind of thing. So I just thought it warranted the discussion. So I, I just thought it warranted the discussion. I've had that discussion with individual councillors, some frustration on timing and, and the cancellation of meetings when we've made arrangements to be here. I probably have some of the most luxury of time of, available. So I'm not passionate about any specific changes, but that's, those are some, some of my comments. And I'm curious what my colleagues at the, on the council table have regarding that, or if it's a non-issue. Thanks.
Thanks, Worship. As somebody who has another job and runs a few businesses, I would be against having a Committee of the Whole meeting on what could be, probably won't be, but my only week that I have to either buckle down and do my other work or try to sneak away for a quick vacation here and there. I'd rather have heavier workloads on the same weeks personally. I don't know if anybody else shares that, but it is already not easy to get out of this town when you do have time off. I don't want to, I don't personally want to be buckle down more on lighter weeks.
Okay. Comments from anyone else? Councillor State Nurse?
All, all I go with, with Councillor Cherry just, just mentioned, I find, you know, with the schedule already put forth, I think I've already done my planning for the year with the, with the city scheduling and, and, you know, kind of committed to that. So I think any major changes like that, I wouldn't be in favor of. The only thing that I would like to, to maybe add to this discussion is, you know, when we look at the big picture and we look at events such as U B C M, Silga, it'd be nice to kind of have, you know, you know, a, a discussion as to who's going to be at those events so we can kind of plan accordingly and kind of, you know, strategize now. And then that way, you know, if there's, if there's any flexibility for other members to not be there, it'd be, it'd be nice to, nice to know. So.
Councillor Devon?
Yeah, I'll weigh in on this. I actually kind of, I see Councillor Palmer's point. As a person who perhaps has the most workload outside of council stuff, I'm inclined to agree with Councillor Cherry just on the fact that it is sometimes comfortable to have that time off, but I do actually, I'm, I'm a little torn on this because I do actually see the point of the preparing more for Committee of the Holes, although Committee of the Holes do tend to be a little less formal and perhaps need less preparation. I do agree, however, on the point of the timing kind of being a little different. We could potentially adjust the timing either of regular council meetings to two o'clock or Committee of the Holes to three. I don't know how that. I mean, Committee of the Holes kind of are designed to take a little longer some of the times because they're more wholesome discussions and less action oriented. So I'm not sure. I just thought I would echo that that is actually a good point, that if everything kind of fell at the same time, even if it's not on the same day separate weeks, then that might be a little less confusing for scheduling, but we'll see what other people say about that. I'm not really super passionate about it.
Councillor Cherry.
Thanks, Worship. Just have a question. Well, give me a quick comment first. I, I don't mind if council meetings started at two o'clock. I don't, my fear is that members of the public may not be able to attend. Although the coffee shops open next door prior to the meetings, so there's a bonus there for us. But I guess my question is, how will any potential changes here affect staff?
So for the most part, well, maybe I'll get Mr. Parliament to weigh in, but I think for the most part, the staff that are present are exempt staff and that just works with their schedule.
Yeah, we're different.
Yeah. So, you know, in, in my thoughts, if we're going to change time, that we go to three o'clock and I'm, I'm being selfish with that. Because I have Committee of the Whole and and C S R D board meeting the third week of the month. And so they've just changed those things. So I have one on Wednesday, one on Thursday, so we can stay overnight, take part in both days. And now what I've been doing is hot foot in their back or doing remote so that I'm here for those days when there's conflicting meetings. But other than that, I'm pretty much willing to work with what is a consensus for the, the group. Councillor Lucio.
Uh, yeah, thanks, Mayor Soles. Um, yeah, I'm kind of fine with how the schedule is right now. I think having the two o'clock Committee of the Whole leaves us a little bit more time to talk through these issues and things that we have to contemplate. And for me personally, I have other obligations through my work as well as different boards that have meetings for Thursdays. So having the additional special Committee of the Whole meetings on Thursdays are challenging for me to reschedule to show up to.
Councillor Orlando.
Uh, yeah, a couple of questions, just a few quick observations. Observations first, I think if we were to make any changes, I think we need several months lead time because I've already set my schedule for the rest of the year and it's hard to adjust. Number two, I think it would be great to actually like do a survey and poll people if, if we were going to change it to try and figure out where people are at. Because we've probably all have separate little considerations. A question I had is, does anyone know the history of why? Uh, another two questions. Number one, staff, I know I've requested just on by email, one on one, that if we are going to have an exceptional meeting, like some sort of thing that is not regularly scheduled, then we can schedule it ahead of time to put it within the same block as the council meeting on an off council week. That way people who are adjusting their schedules around hourly weeks don't have to try to get like, you know, Wednesday afternoon off when they never do and change everything around. So I don't know if that's a a practice staff are using right now. I sort of think they are. And then my other question is regarding Councillor Palmer's suggestion to change Committee of the Whole to alternate weeks for council meetings. So on Tuesdays, for not alter week, to have the, the one Committee of the Whole on a Tuesday as well. Does, does anybody know why the current Tuesday, Thursday thing is the way it is? When was that decided that one be at three and one be at two and one's on Tuesday and one's on Thursday? I, I can't remember. Yeah, it's been that way forever.
Uh, through your worship, I can try to answer that. I remember the previous mayor, we had the standing committees.
Right.
So there was a planning committee, administration, committee, infrastructure.
Yeah.
They were all individual and there wasn't a committee of the whole.
Yes, very good. Remember that, yeah.
So I'm not sure.
And so I brought in Committee of the Whole when I was elected mayor the first time because the select committees, the information wasn't getting to council as a whole, because there wasn't like we have now reporting out in that, in that meeting. So we brought that in and it seemed to work well at two because that gave us time for staff to present and then go. Mr. Mr. Palmer.
Uh, thank you, Sir. For the rest of council, Committee of the Whole and the regular council are your meetings. So each council in each term determines what works best for you. So they'll change over time. Most of the times they don't change because the public expects council business to be done on a certain day historically. But at the end of the day, there are changes. So I'm going to guess that the previous terms of council, it was their schedule that set the Tuesday, Thursday, because it fit that particular group of seven. Moving forward, you can change it. You can change your council days. You can change your Committee of the Whole and you can change the frequency and time. It adjusts to your schedule. So don't feel it's fixed and it's by bylaw. It's not. It changes every four years because every four years there's different people elected, some stay, some move on. And it's adjusted accordingly. So again, it's your committee meetings, it's your council meetings, yours too.
That answers your question.
Yeah, yeah. I think so. And just a different observation on my part. Um, if we were to make any change, I would really like that to happen after the summer. Just because I've locked in things and it would make, make a big change. Having said that, I do support Councillor Palmer's idea of moving Committee of the Whole to the Tuesday. Because I think that's more accessible for people who are trying to schedule their shifts because that you just need to block that one day off as well. And if we were to enter into this conversation, I think it really needs to have a, sort of a survey, you know, cert data, sort of approach where we all sort of hash out ideas and, and maybe have an iterative process where we would nail down what the best time would be. It doesn't seem like big changes. And further to that, I know this is a little bit expansive past the conversation is we all have various committee, commission, outside organization representatives, assignments, and those are also a consideration. So people might need to think about when their other meetings are for their, for their groups. And, and the part of this that's kind of getting into a whole lot of territories commitments to those groups. So for example, right now Revelstoke Community Housing Society, running board member and a council appointee is extremely busy. You know, I was, myself and the rest of the board have been working straight through the Christmas break. We're having weekly meetings that are, you know, hours and hours long as we work hard on the four twenty Downey project. So also that just mindfulness during this conversation that I, I've always felt there, there needs to be sort of an awareness and balance on that. And part of that discussion can also be what the expectations are for the groups that you are a representative for. So one of the things that I, you know, hear is, you know, now in the past, as you show up to the first four meetings in a row for the, the group that you're assigned to, like a community group, and they say to you, wow, you're amazing. You know, you're here every month. The, the last person was never here. Sorry, for example. And there is that expectation that you're going to be going to every single one of their meetings. And, and maybe we can temper that expectation a little bit depending on what the role is or what the assignment is, because some of them don't need you there every week. And also another thing that can be a challenge is they will, they're, in the past, and this is my past to my council, they try and rope you into a lot more work than I think is reasonable. They're like, we're having a fundraiser on the weekend. You're going to be in the parking lot all weekend. And I'm like, no, I've got to go to other meetings and commitments through this. So yeah, that's maybe part of a little bit part of the discussion beyond the scope of this. But Councillor Palmer, if, if possible, any thoughts on next steps in the discussion you've introduced?
Yeah, thank you through, through the chair. Yeah. So I, I wasn't passionate about it. I was just some of the dialogue and we're seeing different aspects here. I didn't have any particularly preconceived processes. The, I think that idea of having some kind of survey of, of the council members, what works, the time of, I'm not sure what exactly that would look like. Maybe that's something for the communications person to do or or our C O could direct something there. I, I don't know if we need to formalize anything. I'm, I'm, I'm pretty open and pretty fluid.
Okay. And Councillor Devon? I'll go to Ms. Floyd here first, Councillor.
Thank you, Worship. So typically corporate services brings forward the list of committee and commission and council dates in December because of the legislative deadline. We would be happy to bring it to a Committee of the Whole in September for the following year to have this discussion at that time. If so chosen.
Yeah. Okay. So I'll go to Councillor Devon.
I was just going to point out that we're hypothetically to change the Committee of the Holes to Tuesdays. The A P C is also Tuesdays. Those would all, both sides of those would also have to change. Just something to note if that was the update.
Yeah. And I think that's what council around the table is, is reiterated. Councillor State Nurse?
I think, I think just to, just to add on to what Councillor De- Devon just said, the changing of the schedule, I think it's hard enough to get volunteers for a lot of these committees. And, you know, we're seeing that across the board. So I, I, I'd be worried about the impact that that would have on those volunteers.
Councillor Palmer.
Um, thank you, Mayor Soles. I think the suggestion from the corporate officer to have a tentative schedule put before us in September would be good. I, I guess if we just leave it, it, it will just be the same going on, which is fine for me. But if we leave it until December, we'll have the exact same discussion again. And I'm hearing different, different narratives from each councillor actually as to what's working, what's not. But it sounds like there's consensus not to make any changes for this year. And that we could consider that in September. So maybe that's the most prudent thing to do.
Councillor Orlando.
Just a quick question on the Committee of the Whole question of moving it to a Tuesday if it does not interfere with a bunch of other stuff. I believe Councillor State Nurse and Councillor Cherry were not in favor of that idea. I would be, and Councillor Palmer and myself thought maybe that was a possibility. I don't know if Councillor Devon or Mayor Soles had any thoughts or Councillor Lucio was also on line?
So Councillor Lucio, I'll, I'll go to you first. And, and because you'd mentioned, you know, do you have committees and whatnot on Tuesdays? And, you know, you're pretty dedicated to your work, certain things going on where you're at. Any comments from you?
Tuesdays are definitely a lot easier for me to make work with my work schedule as well as childcare schedule. So that would be the preference, but continuing to have the one Thursday Committee of the Whole meeting is fine. Just having multiple of those Thursday meetings in a month makes it challenging.
Okay. Councillor Cherry.
Thanks. If this were to move to Tuesday, I'd have to leave Community Futures, Community Foundation and the A P C.
Okay, thank you for that.
On top of not having a week off where I can potentially sneak away out of town on vacation, trip occasionally.
Councillor Devon, any?
Uh, I'm fairly neutral on the, on the idea. I would help with work scheduling, but on the other hand, I do appreciate having a week off, you know, twice a month where I don't really have to think too much about council stuff as I have a bunch of other jobs. So it is, it is both good and bad. It's a conversation that we're certainly not having for this year by the sounds of it, because it would be a massive sweeping change that we kind of railroaded through. So I would like to see with the next nine months, spring, this revisit and see how it feels about it then. But right now, I'm fairly neutral on the subject.
And that as well and fairly neutral. It would work, work well for me, but I also hear what others are saying. What works as far as work and then what works as far as being able to meet my old, their obligations and as Councillor Cherry has alluded to, a bit of time off once in a while. So.
Uh, just another thing to consider, this firm is not going to be available on probably two or three of the Tuesdays at that time.
And our, our schedules are pretty much set for this next year with most of our things. So do you need a motion for us to take it to council to bring it to you for September? You're okay. We'll deal with it in September. All right. Let's do that. We'll talk about it again in September. All right. I want to move on to number nine, staff reports, Cape application year end report. P R C, Mr. Nano, do you have a presentation that you would like to do?
Thank you, Your Worship. No formal presentation. This is just a summary for council to see the applications that were approved in 2023. We had ten applications and all ten applications were approved. If council has any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Any comments from council regarding some of the previous events we've had over the last year? Mr. Nano, you've got, you have a full slate of people for your, for your faith group?
Uh, yes, Your Worship. So the group is comprised of myself, Councillor Devlin, our C N P detachment commander, Chris Dodds, and the arena foreman, which is Tyler Romeo.
Right. Okay. Thank you for that. Councillor Palmer, you have a question or comment?
Uh, just a comment. Just a thanks to the Director of Recreation on how the Cape is handled and administered. It, it's very flexible. It's been working very, very well for many, many years and without any problems. So I just appreciate how that's been administered. Thank you.
Any other comments from Mr. Nano? So none. Thank you. Appreciate your work on, on the Cape and getting all things to, to fruition. Going to move on to corporate municipal asset naming. Ms. Floyd, do you have a presentation that you want to do?
Thank you, Worship. No, no presentation. This report was originally to go to a council meeting, so I apologize that it has not been converted to a discussion paper format. But this was all triggered when the Director of Parks, Racing and Culture received a request to name the Revelstoke Disc Golf Society park. And it was brought to our attention that there is no mechanism to name a municipal asset. So very cursory. We went through and I worked with Paul and Lori and created a policy. The ultimate decision still lies on council, but it kind of provides guidelines just like the road naming policy.
Right. Any comments? Excuse me, from council? I see there is a recommendation here if everybody's in agreement or someone would like to put that on the table to go to council. So I'll just ask, comment, excuse me. Councillor Devon?
Um, no particular comment. I think it's important that we have a policy for these things. Obviously it's come up and it was a bit of an issue, so probably not the world's most pressing issue, but definitely important to have. So I'd be willing to put that motion on the table that we bring it to council to have a. So I'd be willing to put that motion on the table that we bring it to council uh to have a discussion on municipal asset polit- naming policy C two.
Okay, so that you wanna just have it, bring it to council or do you want it to be approved to go to council?
Uh we will, we will say.
Okay, stacker for the motion. Councillor State and Hearst, any further discussion on this motion? Councillor Manu.
Uh yeah, just a question regarding the policy. Um uh last time it was at council, I stepped out to the washroom and it came and went. Uh was it just, there was no discussion at the time, it was just deferred to because we were running late on that meetings, that's right, right? Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Um uh one question here uh is, does the policy allow for the naming? And I think it does of somebody who is alive.
I believe it does, and like I said, the ultimate decision is on council.
Yeah, okay. Um I do know, and it was, it's just anecdotal uh interest um that many policies prohibited that specifically um out of concern uh that uh uh living persons in good standing can turn to uh uh liv- living persons in poor standing and that it is embarrassing uh to have uh that happen uh to uh your uh uh public facility. Uh so I just was wondering, and I I feel it's a fairly common practice. I don't know if staff in the in the process of going through this managed to uh note that. Or I don't know, is this similar to other provincial policies?
It's similar to other municipal policies, yes.
Mm-hmm.
At this point, it was quite a while ago when I wrote it, but I did review other municipalities and kind of took their ideas and formed this one.
Hmm, hmm.
And so it looks like um on page four, name in honor of an individual or group who has made a significant contribution provincially, nationally or internationally. And it does not speak to um being alive or dead.
Okay. I've had that conversation with some people in the community and and some people have been suggested that there be something named in honor of this individual and I smiled and said, what do you think about that? And so I'm not exactly sure I want to be croaked yet fully done, but honor and and I just smile. Go from there, I understand where you're getting at, it's that uh that sort of uh thought process. Councillor Palmer.
Yeah, it's just on that uh subject there, it's an interesting uh thought. Um I I note that even dead people that have had multiple places mul- uh named after them after they're dead come into disrepute. So say even example, um Begbie as a name, uh there there's many, many places named that way. Uh and it's um I I know that if I had a business, I certainly wouldn't be uh naming my name Begbie today. So it's an interest- interesting thought. And I I think maybe the flexibility in the policy uh allows for the collective wisdom of the people that are making decisions at the time. So I'm I'm generally okay with uh the policy as it is.
Any other comments before I call a question about this going to council, councillor Orlando?
Uh your worship, I just one more question regarding uh uh a staff feedback on whether they anticipate uh problematic uh pressure uh to have a whole bunch of things uh for people who want things named after themselves and their family. Um I I feel that in the past, we have had various programs that um have uh cost uh sort of that urge to have your name on something has caused them to proliferate and uh uh led to uh challenges uh uh such as somebody wanting, you know, this particular thing named after someone. And uh uh maybe, you know, I was wondering if staff could flesh out what the negotiation would be around the cost of that. So if I want the, you know, the washroom next to uh uh Frisley Plaza named after myself as my legacy, uh you know, uh how much is that gonna cost me? Are you gonna worry about getting that kind of uh and that kind of stuff? Cause I think I I mean, I'm joking around here, but I think that's actually like a real thing where people are gonna be like, I'll give you a thousand bucks for it. And then all of a sudden you're wasting staff time dealing with stuff like that. I'll put a urinal on your hand. Washing, yeah, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I support it. Just tell them it's already called Wooden Head Washroom or something like that.
The Frisley Plaza is the one you want, so I guess you're gonna have to contribute in toilet. Anyway, any comments, Ms Floyd?
Sure, councillor Orlando, through your worship, um it has not been considered. However, I think I can probably tweak the policy a little bit more. We don't name washrooms, so it it has to be a significant municipal asset.
Yeah, okay. Hmm.
Um there is an application form and council could review an application form and say that they weren't interested in that.
Hmm. Uh and you're not, you're not uh renaming uh sorry to the chair, uh existing assets, you're, this is about new things?
Well, there's always a possibility of renaming is in the policy, but this stuff would always come to council to weigh in.
Yeah, so ju- just quickly, I I've dealt with a lot of this over the years. Most recently, there was a street in Sicimus named after ex-N H L hockey player that grew up on that street back in the sixties. The request came before council to name that street after the family name, the family name is Flockhart. And before council considered that, they established a robust policy to deal with a lot of the questions you have. And so when the request came in and the applications came in, council would have a policy to guide them. And in the policy talks about costs, talks about what's eligible, not eligible, ineligible. Um which specific assets would be considered, which specific assets are off the table? And it would guide council's decision because each application is different. So that's just one example, others and other municipalities are all associated to a very strong policy to guide your decision. But a policy is not a bylaw, each year council could amend and 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 change the policy to reflect the changing times. There might be an asset you wanna add to the list, and there might be an asset you wanna take off the list. Naming rights, naming rights is another one. You're gonna have commercial entities come forward before council saying, I'll put my name on the new multiplex facility, for example. If you approve it, well, if you don't have a policy, it's a tough decision to make. So it all starts with a very thorough and robust policy, thank you.
Hmm, great. And then.
So and just a little bit further to that, we've had the road naming policy for a number of years and individuals come forward to ask to name a road. Um if it's a new subdivision, then they go through the planning department and work through the road naming policy that is connected, um Kathy English at the museum, there's a lot of history attached to that. So I don't anticipate it being something frivolous where people will just apply to name.
Hmm, hmm, yeah, okay. Uh thank you, and and just uh, yeah, speaking to the road naming policy, uh um a Linek Road uh ninety, I'm sure was named after some of it. But I know it was.
It was probably uh it's either the brother's friend who lived on that on that street.
Okay, okay, interesting, yeah. Um um and not the N B A store on there, which uh I know I shared with some of.
Probably a a great.
Yeah, yeah, the the uh uh new commissioner, the Ukraine to who live on this, who live on the street and were wondering about it. And it was, yeah, just interesting to to make that connection that uh it was not the the local connection to it. Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, councillor Palmer.
Uh thank you, Mayor Souls, uh I'll try and breathe brief. Uh it's an interesting conversation, I think councillor Orlando brings some very valid points. Uh uh basically uh on people buying their reputation, we maybe haven't seen that here, or maybe we have. Um and so whether that's corporations or individuals giving large donations. So for example, if there was some individual that was willing to give us a hundred million dollars towards our new multiplex building on the condition of uh naming, uh you know, what what would that discussion be? Um and so in there, and there's been some recently, so for example, in um Kamloops, there's the uh whether it's buying reputation or not, but the Galardys have a the Galardy School of Business, a recent one, there's a hospital, I think there with the name. So there there there, I think there it, those kind of things are important because throughout the world, uh rich people or cor- corporations like the Bell Center or things like that have bought um importance to their name or of them as individuals or to the corporation. Uh so and I think that just uh points to the need of having a policy so that there is some guidelines without being overly prescriptive as to what those decisions might be in the future. Cause we don't know what the situation will be that comes before us, thanks.
Great, all right.
You're worship, I just follow up on uh on exhibition of councillor Palmer. Um and is uh s- uh staff, uh has staff received uh or mayor staff received expressions of interest uh from anyone? For example, in naming the uh arena, uh and this is why why this policy is being in place. I don't know what the request was for the disc golf uh facility, was it uh? Uh but is, has anyone expressed any interest or is this part of the thought process we are going here? Is there any background uh uh that so that council should be aware of?
Uh councillor Orlando, through your worship, uh this was triggered by the disc golf. Um there has been no discussion as far as I am aware of.
Yeah, no one, no one's approached me with a hundred million, uh unless councillor Palmer is willing to contribute there. Councillor Devon.
Can I just express uh mild disappointment that the disc golf didn't go for the frisbee disc golf course? That just seems like it was a little bit of a nail on the head and I'm just kind of upset that they said that.
All right, so I'm gonna call a question, this will go to council, we'll have another conversation. But uh this is for this naming policy to be approved going to council, all is in favor? Opposed, no motions carried yet, so thank you, thank you for your time. All right, we are moving on to new item C, City of Rebelstoke Visual Representation Proposal to Update. Update the uh city's corporate logos. So our first presentation by our new communications coordinator, Francesca Williams, is here. She's gonna be uh doing her first presentation to council and um so we could be gentle on her. Uh I could carry on chatting while she tries to swallow what it is she's doing. Or I could say, turn it over to her and see what happens, so.
Thank you very much. Um hello, everyone, um just to start, I want to say thank you to everyone that's welcomed me and taken time. This is, I hit my two-month mark on Sunday, so still feeling brand new, but very, very welcomed, so thank you for that. Um I'll start my presentation. Um so the city of Rebelstoke hired a communications coordinator to be responsible for developing and implementing effective communication strategies to play a crucial role in ensuring clear and consistent messaging across communication channels. Currently, there is no standard of communication, either internally or externally. Staff are making best call decisions as there is not a formal process to follow. This is the reason for inconsistent communications across the board. And therefore, I suggest that a brand guidelines document be built as a step towards the overall communications plan which was set as a priority by council and affirmed by the communications task force. Brand guidelines provide specifications for the logo, for colors, typography and other visual elements. Having such a document ensures a unified representation and consistency in how messages are presented, which in turn would improve the city's professional image and help build confidence and trust amongst the community. This is especially important in communicating complex information such as policies as it helps staff create clear and consistent messaging, making it easier for residents to understand and engage with important information. However, before starting the brand guidelines and the overall communications plan, staff are looking for some level of certainty that the existing logo is still supported by council and the community. With the city's one hundred and twenty-fifth birthday on March first, staff suggests that this may be a good time to revamp the logo. The current logo represents a host of community values. However, while it was appropriate for the time in which it was made, it misses the guidelines of what makes a good logo today. A well-thought-out logo redesign can better align with Rebelstoke's evolving identity, foster a sense of community pride and effectively communicate its values to residents and visitors. Best practices state that a good logo should be: simple and easy to recognize, memorable and leave a lasting impression, relevant and convey the identity values and essence of the area, versatile and adaptable, timeless, appropriate, distinctive, scalable and able to maintain its visual appeal and clarity when scaled up or down, consistent and time and cost effi- efficient. Staff have included a few examples of how the logo is currently being used within the report that you were given today. The logo successfully meets the above guidelines of relevancy as it contains many odes to Rebelstoke's identity, values and history. However, there is room for improvement in terms of simplicity as it is composed of a total of seven elements, not including the gradient colors or the different elements that make up the mountain range portion. Memorability, as it is memorable to those that live here, but it lacks the distinct red Rebelstoke tie to be familiar outside of the local area. Timelessness, as it represents a different era. And versatility, scalability, consistency and efficiency. The current logo has many formats, a few of which are approved by the city as correct. This has arisen because the logo is not efficient to reproduce in various formats and requires frequent modifications to be adaptable to various mediums and sizes. This has led to it losing its visual impact. If council decides to support a logo redesign, community alignment will be essential in ensuring a successful transition. The city will need the community's help in ensuring the logo aligns with the evolving identity and aspirations of Rebelstoke and that it is inclusive and resonates with the diverse demographics, all of which help form a better representation of Rebelstoke's character. However, not all community members will understand graphic elements. Therefore, instead of opening it up to the community at this point, it is suggested that the communications coordinator, in consultation with the senior leadership team, present in-house options upon which the community can vote on during a month-long public voting campaign, which would run both online through our digital channels and offline using pop-up voting stations. The options will be created using Rebelstoke's official community plan and the wayfinding strategy as both recent documents have high levels of community engagement, relevancy and Rebelstoke-based research. Staff have included the suggested timeline within the report again that you were given earlier. So staff seek direction for one of the following options. Option one, that the committee of the whole recommends to council that the municipal logo project be supported as presented a a hip adhering to the included timeline. Option two, that the committee of the whole recommends to council that the municipal logo project be supported as presented with an amended timeline, but still falling within two thousand and twenty-four. Option three, the committee of the whole recommends to council that the municipal logo project be further reviewed and considered in the two thousand and twenty-five budget and that a project management plan be developed to outline the need for consultant and community engagement. Or option four, the committee of the whole recommends to council that a communications coordinator uses the existing City of Rebelstoke logo as the main building block to establish brand guidelines and all the associated communications material. In summary, the city of Rebelstoke hired a communications coordinator to ensure clear and consistent communications. To be clear and consistent needs an agreed-upon visual representation as this building blocks. For this, staff are looking for direction as to whether the municipality wants to adopt a new logo or retain the old logo, the current logo. Thank you for listening, any questions?
Great, Mr. Palmer.
No, just wanted to thank the work that Francesca has done on this, this uh after only two months to dive into this issue is both convertible and bold. Uh but there's been a lot of labor already done with the wayfinding exercise and uh the work that we have to embark on with the new website design, so congratulations, thank you.
Yes, thanks, uh Francesca, I really appreciate uh your your work and how you've kind of dug in right off the bat. Uh we talked about, I mean, one of the 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 main things you wanted to focus on is dealing with that website that that because none of us can find anything on it and that we've had communications with staff and and some of council regarding that sort of thing. Um and we spoke briefly about how the previous level was achieved kind of in a contest format and, you know, came up with what. So I'm supportive of uh of us moving forward, you're you're ambitious about wanting to get something off so that we can get things started and uh support you in that uh, but uh let's hear from. But let's hear from the rest of council with that sort of thing. Uh, anyone want to start off? Counselor Devlin?
Uh, start off, thank you for not coming in here and suggesting we redesign Grizzly Plaza. Significantly less hubbub around it, I think, so it's a good starting stepping stone. Uh, I'm in supportive of a redesign, um, in general. I probably don't need to say this, as I've been listening to what you're saying, and it doesn't sound like you're missing the mark on this, but there are elements of, uh, history and elements of, yeah, history, I guess. I don't have enough to look at that. So in the current one, I'm just, uh, I would, I would suggest, you know, to maintain some of that, but not to, not to pick on them a little, but the Rebe dot logo is great from a marketing standpoint, but has absolutely no character in my mind, so that might be a little too far on the other side. General support.
Counselor Lando?
Uh, yeah, your worship, thank you, uh, and thank you for, uh, uh, thank Ms. Williams for the presentation. You know, yeah, generally, I, uh, I'm a support, moving forward recommendation, uh, one, uh, obviously, there's a lot of things we need to move forward, uh, with on communications, and this is a first step, because you're gonna be duplicating a whole bunch of work if you don't get graphic, uh, representation, uh, down, uh, and then move on to other, uh, projects like the website, or else you'll be redoing everything and doing it twice, uh, and that's no good. Uh, I guess, uh, you know, um, uh, the, you know, the, the only sort of, I guess, a couple of questions, and I'm sort of trying to look ahead to the horizon for iceberg. And I think Counselor Devlin has alluded to that, and people in our community feel strongly about our history and heritage and all that kind of stuff. A history heritage that is always changing and has always changed and is very fluid, and that, uh, becomes a challenging conversation as to how do you, you know, represent, uh, that and how do you do it in what needs to be a basic, direct, straightforward way? Uh, and I think, I was not around when the Heritage themed one was unveiled in nineteen nineties, but it definitely, uh, sort of seems to me reflective of that conversation where the whole committee gets involved and we end up with seven elements in, uh, in there. Um, but I, I think it is time, and my question is that, and then more specifically, also alluding to the Full Stop logo for uh, to, uh, tourism Revelstoke, Sea Revelstoke, which they have said, uh, uh, they are actually opening up that font and that, uh, uh, graphic representation, uh, to, uh, wider copyright for use so that more people can use it around the community. So my concern, uh, in, um, looking at some of the suggestions there, whereas that we would base it visually, uh, on the wayfinding signage, which has some alignment, I'm guessing with the black and white colors, I'm not too sure. Uh, so getting to my question here is, is how do we, um, negotiate this process to, number one, make sure we're inclusive and respectful when we're talking about, uh, uh, deeply held values of, uh, community and identity? And, and number two, how do we, uh, how do you envision that we would differentiate ourselves, uh, from other branding and organizations? So that, uh, something that is done by someone else is not misinterpreted as, uh, something that is ours? And I think that is a challenge we're facing right now, and then a lot of the, you know, the, the, uh, Sea Revelstoke and Tourism Revelstoke have really, uh, powerful, um, um, you know, social media presence, marketing savvy, and I think a lot of their branding is, is, is actually interpreted as being coming from the City of Revelstoke, uh, and, and we go, you know, we kind of maybe don't get that, but I think it is. So that's my question. How do you negotiate those two, uh, main challenges, uh, through that? What are your thoughts?
Counsel Orlando, through your worship. Please bear with me while I learn the right people in this scenario. I'd like to point out that I am brand new to Revelstoke, so I am not the expert in what the logo should include. Um, I have the standards that I would like it to adhere to, to make the communications more uniform and consistent across the board. In terms of what it includes, I think that that is a discussion between the City of Revelstoke and City of Revelstoke's major stakeholders. And that is why I would want it to go to a community vote. I think that once council agrees on the options that the community then votes on, like, that's the safety net there. You guys are key players in the community and you're sort of that, that, uh, safety net for that, um. In terms of misrepresentating, misrepresenting, um, other logos that are seen in the community, um, I'm not gonna come in here and say, there's only one option and it's the Revelstoke period option. I think that they've done a really good job marketing to, for tourism. I don't know that that's, um, an easy transition to make from tourism to municipal government, and I think that it, while it might be one of the options that is brought forward, um, there will be other options that may be more appropriate. Um, this is, yeah, something that I will be doing a lot of research. I actually am meeting Kathy tomorrow. Um, so that will be an interesting discussion, but, um, I'd like to call upon the Director of Corporate Services if you have anything else to add about the relationships, but it was, it's time.
Oh, thank you. Um, no, I think you've covered it all. Um, in previous conversations, Francesca and I have talked about having some meetings with the other stakeholders, perhaps meeting with Tourism Revelstoke just to discuss, um, that relationship and, and how we can differentiate ourselves, but at the same time, build relationships.
Any other comments from council? Counsel, Counsel Lucio, you have your hand up.
Uh, thank you, Mirshells. Uh, yeah, first, um, I want to voice my support for this. Um, I think it would be nice to have a little revamp of the logo, um, but still maintain, um, some of the heritage and history that we have. Um, I have a question, wasn't, uh, CED updating their website? Has that continued to move forward, or has that kind of, uh, brought this discussion along?
Ms. Brown is here in the room, so I'm gonna ask her that question.
And I saw that has no amount of business as well. Um, yes, we've been working on a rebrand of the CED site, representative of the city and the region's focus on account development in partnership with the, uh, BDIC building partners, including Tourism Revelstoke Chamber, uh, both of whom use a similar, uh, kind of center and branding guidelines for that. I do want to confirm one thing, the brand that was developed by, um, who was actually owned by the city? I got some contact with them, so if you want to, anything they produce, even the money actually belongs to the city. And so I think that cost them down, and it was very, it was a big, I had a discussion about how they wanted to open the brand up. We were, well, we haven't actually worked on that, because that's something that they just can't do with the products that they take them to develop. There has to be some clarity around the ownership, so I'm really glad you threw that out and qualified that. Uh, yeah, the CED look is, is, is in line with those brand standards that are developed and are applied to the wayfinding strategy. Uh, our former CEO, Don Lowe, was on that initial committee with Kathy English and the tourism team, who I have started with the city, and they had just watched the new brand that was, you know, built on the original train station sign. So I'm not sure what conversations happened with Don, and then time, I do know that they mentioned it formed to do the city's colors, the yellow and green and the, uh, for reading tourism is not used to be yellow or the green, so there's some sort of adventure itself right there. But yeah, the CED logo, I'm not sure now to answer your question, but the, the Counsel Orlando, John, can you?
Counselor Lando, you on your way in?
Conversation we had last time.
Uh, oh, no, I, I didn't have a question. It was just regarding a question, uh, from Counselor Lucio, uh, regarding, uh, the website. And it's, yeah, it's, uh, a week away, I think, was the latest update or two before publication, yeah. And it's based on, yeah, uh, we were looking at it yesterday at the CED meeting, and it's, yeah, based on the existing, what I call the Full Stop one, the Revelstoke with the period, which, you know, if you go look at, uh, you know, hundred-year-old pictures of the train station, it is right there, um, uh, in, you know, on the, on the coffee stand there. And I, I noticed, I remember provincial municipal government media figure criticized it for looking like a, uh, coffee shop logo, and I would say, well, it was a coffee shop logo, uh, a hundred years ago, and we had great coffee here in Revelstoke and coast-to-coast service. Anyways, um, yeah, uh, interesting point, yeah, because, uh, to bring that up, and I know that there was also discussion by, uh, Tourism Revelstoke during their presentation of expanding what is currently simply a wordmark into a logo as well. Um, so I don't know where they're at. So, yeah, it sounds like some additional level of complexity and coordination and, uh,
Kathy's passing off to Pat and working with Francesca and Cindy upon what that looks like in the future, but we should probably clarify the ownership of that brand and probably, I think, um, you know, they should, that's, that's.
All right. Any other comments? I do, uh, I am in support of option one and wondering if others are. If there is, let's put a motion on the table to go to council with that. Counsel Devlin?
Uh, yeah, I'll put a motion on the table, but municipal logo project, please, or that, we recommend.
All right, second for that motion. Uh, Counsel Palmer, you have your hand up. Are you seconding that motion? Uh, I can ask for a second, or and then we discuss for.
Yeah, I was just gonna enter into the discussion before it went there, but I'm, I'm fine with seconding the motion.
Okay, so Counsel Palmer will second it. Now, do you want to weigh in?
Uh, yeah, thank you. I, uh, Francesca, just also, uh, is very, very brave on, on, on logos, and, um, I agree, uh, actually, quite wholeheartedly that now is a good time to do this, and, um, a decade ago, it might not have been. In fact, I would suggest it wasn't. Um, I, and without going into my own opinions about our current logo, the refresh and, um, uh, you know, bringing up to some modernization and making sure that that's integrating with your future communications, projects is, is established. So I'm very, very supportive of, of that. The, just further to some of the comments regarding Tourism Revelstoke and word marking, branding, logo, uh, that discussion. I think that as they're such an important community partner on marketing our community, that their input will be very crucial, whether there is an alignment or, or if it's just input as to how that, uh, evolves. Uh, Revelstoke's branding as such through logos or word marks, so there is the Revelstoke Full Stop, there's our historic, um, uh, logo that, um, it was pointed out to me, sometime there's, you know, there's a train that's in there that's not always obvious to people. What sometimes is obvious to people is there's a fetus which is not there, uh, but it can appear like that. Um, so the, but anyway, just on the, you know, how we go ahead, so the, there is the Tourism Revelstoke. Uh, and whether we like it or not, RMR is a big draw. So they have a very well-established logo that is well-done, and a lot of people identify Revelstoke with, with their logo. They, they're not sharing it with us as far as I know right now, but there is a logo there that's for their marketing purposes, but it does identify our community. Um, so I think they might, you know, there might be a place for, um, at least having some input, uh, from them, and these, this, these are things that staff could consider. Uh, the Tourism Revelstoke I'd see as very crucial, and they might want to, might want to actually have a representative from them, uh, going ahead. My question, uh, on the options, I don't have the report right in front of me, but on the, to ensure the professionalism, and I'm certainly getting that sense, but the professionalism of the logo, um, would, do, do, will you be using outside, uh, resources that have expertise? Uh, and do we have the budget available for that if you are?
Ms. Williams?
Counselor Palmer, through your worship, um, I do have graphic design skills myself. Um, I would be, uh, I would be designing the options that would be brought to council to narrow down to three choices for the community to vote on, um, at that point. Um, it might be that council recommends that somebody with more graphic design skills comes and tidies it up. If we do go for option one, though, and we're unveiling those on March first, that's a very tight turnaround for me to get you the designs with the report, to narrow it down, to then get a graphic designer to edit them, to then share them with the community. We could, another option, if we went with, uh, sorry, if we went with option two and wanted to go that route, then that would give us more time to find a graphic designer and work with them to create those three options. Or, option one, we could stick with what I've said, and I can do the three mock logos for the community, and then once we've picked one, um, then when we unveil that to the community on Canada Day, along, and that's aligning with the timeline in option one, um, we could get a graphic designer to tidy it up before then.
Good. This will be, this will be more conversation when we get to, um, get to the council sort of, uh, thing, moving that forward, but at least you've given us some timelines with that. So any other comments, uh, Counsel Orlando? And then, and then Counsel Palmer, I'll go back to you for follow-up, and then Counsel Orlando.
Well, it's just a direct response to my question, but that's fine.
No, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Uh, yeah, thank you for your answer. That's, that's very, uh, reassuring to me, uh, and, uh, just a testament that, uh, we've done a good job, uh, on the recruiting of getting somebody with those skills in-house. So, uh, certainly, why would we go outside if we have those skills in, in-house now? That, that's certainly adding a great value. So thank you for that. I look forward to seeing, uh, those options coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your worship, three quick points. Uh, number one, uh, uh, council did support, uh, bringing this report, uh, uh, to the meeting today. It was not published on the agenda. I'm sure staff will add it later. So if anybody watching this and noting it's not there, you will be able to read it there later. Uh, on that point, number two, the reason it is timely is because this consultation is, uh, processes through the one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary. Want to sort of hit the, hit the, uh, uh, community then for consultations, so that is, uh, the, the second thing. And the third thing I wanted to say was, uh, you know, uh, Mayor Council is here to support you through this process. Uh, this is a public engagement thing, and, uh, um, uh, uh, this, uh, sometimes the people of Revelstoke like to mix it up on this kind of stuff. So I can just, uh, thank you for bringing it forward, and you have our support. And the last thing I want to say is, if you have the opportunity to read the report, what it notes, uh, is things like, in order to tackle the website, which is a big priority identified, we better do this first because we're gonna be doing it twice. So, uh, for those who, who would say, why are we just looking at the branding right now? Shouldn't we do, dealing with more substantive things? This is in order to get to the substantive things in the correct process. So, thank you.
You should, comments, Counsel, sure.
Thanks, your worship. Uh, just a question to Chair, Ms. Williams, are you able, when you present this to council, to show up some of the historical logos that have been used in this, by the City of Revelstoke? That's an addition we can have as well. Just, uh, love to take a peek.
Counselor Cherry, through your worship, um, yeah, I, I'm meeting with Kathy tomorrow, so maybe that's something that I can bring forward and see if she has, uh, any copies within the archive. If not, uh, maybe that's something that the staff in the city will can help me locate.
Awesome. And you, I just, yeah, maybe there's something in there that we want to go back or some amendments or something. But, uh, I commend you for bringing this forward. Good luck. Uh, rebranding is fun and stressful, so.
Thank you.
All right, I am gonna call a question on the motion. All those in favor? Opposed? No motions carried unanimously. There you have it, Ms. Williams. Thank you so much for, uh, your first discussion paper for this council. It's been approved. Fly at her.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. All right, we're gonna move on to our last item, correspondence. Uh, so there is a committee of the whole recommending to council to go by bike, uh, presentation earlier. Uh, someone want to make that motion for me? Please, Counsel Orlando.
Uh, yes, uh, I moved that the committee of the whole recommends to council, uh, that the go-by-bike Revelstoke report into the four-suit Tropic Homing, cycling infrastructure, area study and impact analysis. Be referred to staff for consideration of recommendations, including budget impacts, uh, contained, uh, within the report.
Second of the motion, please. Counsel Devlin, any further discussion on that motion? Saying none, I will call a question. All is in favor? Opposed? No motions carried unanimously. Thank you. Thank you so much for your time today. Are at the end of the meeting, so I will call for a motion to terminate. Counselor, uh, statementers, Counselor Devlin, all in favor? Motion's carried. We are gone. Thank you so much.
Not one person want to put forward a dog and Duke logo?
I'm leaving all, I'm leaving the specific logos.